Shall we pray? Because we didn't do enough praying in church, right? Holy and living God, we thank you for this congregation and for the ability to be your people in the world in a community of faith that supports us and holds us and that asks us to support it as well. Blessed this time together in the listening, in the speaking, in the knowing that you are calling us to be your church in Rochester. We ask it in Jesus' name. Amen. So, agenda, we're talking about our new stewardship approach and the timing of it, and Bob is going to start off with that.
Hi, I'm Stevenson, I'm co-chair of the... Whoops. That's better, okay. We'll try again. This is the third of our four stewardship Sundays. We've started earlier this year intentionally. We've had problems in the past where the... Basically, the giving comes together very late in the year, and we end up scrambling in January to figure out what's happening with the budget. So this year, we've intentionally started earlier, really by, I think, three or four weeks. And it gives the financial committee time to analyze the budgets and plan the ministries for next year. Most of you probably in this group already know all these things, but for completeness. The other big change was that the Community Outreach Center, the COC budget, was broken out from the general church budget so we can properly allocate the expenses and costs of running that operation, really. The pledge campaign also, in parallel, has broken out general church contributions and COC contributions. So there's a separate line on the pledge cards for the COC. And it was done for a number of reasons. One is to help encourage both internal and external giving. So we've taken the approach of reaching out to external contributors more actively, and we're still trying to develop new ways of doing that. It's a kind of a continual effort. But we're hoping that the focus brought by that contribution line will help boost the revenues to the COC. And it's best practice, right? We're trying to match the revenues to the expenses, so financially, it makes sense. We increased the goals fairly dramatically this year. So we're trying to reach about 1.2 million in general church revenues and then about 300,000 in COC. And that's to fully fund all the ministries that we have planned. If we don't reach those goals, there'll have to be cutbacks similarly to the way it was done this year, but we're hoping to far exceed those goals and to fully fund all the ministries that we have planned. Maybe at the end, we'll be happy to answer any questions, but I'll just turn it over to Michelle.
I'm in here for three things, so I'm going to try to do that succinctly. I know some of you want to go to some sort of... Watch some sort of football game today. Another piece we've added to the stewardship push for this year is to really reframe our thinking around what stewardship means. There is a difference. One of the things I've been trying to teach and walk with people through, there's a difference between stewardship and fundraising. Fundraising is we've got a budget to meet, and we need this many dollars to do that. When we frame that kind of fundraising in a church and we start to look at it as stewardship, it becomes a whole different question, a whole different goal, and a whole different mood around the raising of money to support mission. Stewardship means that we understand ourselves as God's people to be stewarding the gifts that God has given to us. The things that we have, all that we are, everything we acknowledge comes from God. Stewardship is our return of those things in a spirit of worship, in a spirit of spiritual discipline. How are we responding to God's great good gifts in our life? And when we look at fundraising for churches in that light and through that lens, this becomes a conversation not just about dollars and not just about budget lines and those kinds of things. It becomes a conversation about our own faith. It becomes a conversation about how we are living as God's people in the world who've been blessed to be part of this community of faith in which we can do so much more than we can as individuals. And how are we returning to God what is God's so that this church can be God's hands and feet in the world? It's a different lens. We're still trying to meet a budget. We're still trying to raise dollars. But the focus, turning the focus to our response to God, I think, changes the conversation. And that's the conversation we're trying to have this year. Fair? The next... Yeah, I guess we'll take questions. Did you say we'd take questions at the end? Okay. And you can find me anytime if you want to talk more about that. I am very happy to talk about that with you. If you have questions or comments or just want to chat about it, please find me. I'm happy to. Our next agenda item is Connection Sunday and Volunteer Engagement. We had on September 9th? 8th? That Sunday in September, we made possibilities available for folks to sign up for things, to volunteer and connect. We had this mission fair in the gathering center. We had all our information out there. Who are we? What do these ministry areas of the church do? And in part to educate, to teach people what these groups are, because there are new folks coming all the time to Asbury First. They don't know what the Outreach Center is, or they don't know what the music program looks like. So that was the opportunity for people to learn, but also to volunteer, to connect people with their passions and their call from God to a place in this church, helping the church accomplish its mission. We have a brand-new team of volunteer engagement coordinators. We're still looking for our name, but... Volunteer Engagement Team, but it shortens to VET, so we're not quite sure about that. But we've been working for months trying to wrap our heads around the need for volunteers in all walks of the church's life. Committees and teams need folks to help make those missions work. There are jobs that our staff is doing, our paid staff is doing, having taken on volunteer roles during COVID. Lots of things were being done by volunteers pre-COVID that our staff took on and still have. And so how do we help create a culture of volunteering here in this congregation? How do we help people match what God is calling them to do with the things that need to be done? So we're working on that. That's a work in progress. Beginning of a September Ministry Fair was the first round, and we've got lots of ideas about that. So stay tuned. Please, please stay tuned and hear what's developing and the ways that we can involve more people in the life of Asbury First and in the ministries. Our hope is that God is calling each person here into some small piece of the work that we do together. So that's that whole piece. The Dream Team update. I just keep going, you know? Don't give a preacher a microphone. I'll just keep going. So the Dream Team update. The Dream Team is close to work. You all participated last... Sorry. You all participated over the last year collecting dreams, suggesting vision, praying for this church, hoping for what's next, trying to create a new vision for the next 200 years. And that Dream Team has been putting together all of those dreams and all of those conversations and trying to decide what we produce, what's going to get produced out of all that work. We had a one-day retreat in September. In September, we will be finishing our work, we hope, on a half-day retreat in November. Our goal is to form a template, a strategic framework for the vision for Asbury First that will contain all of those dreams and hopes and visions and by which we can make decisions and make plans and create ministries. So there'll be much more on that to come because it's still in process. But that group, let me tell you, these people are so committed, so committed to this life at Asbury First and so committed to carrying us into the next 200 years. And I am so delighted to work with all of them.
Okay. Diana Carter, our Outreach Committee Chair is out of town, so I'm filling in for Diana this morning. And I want to start by just offering some statistics from the service and outreach that our Community Outreach Center has done through 2024. So these first numbers are 2024 through September, the first nine months of the year. We've served just over 9,000 meals, over 300 loads of laundry, almost 800 showers, over 200 haircuts, just under 300 bicycles repaired or refurbished, 720 bags of groceries out into the community. And then in the storehouse, 1,766 families served and 4,279 individuals served. And then I did not have up-to-date statistics for the U.R. Well Clinic, but through August, 225 patients seen in the clinic. So we're doing really amazing work. The story behind those numbers is that basically every single program is growing and doing more and serving more people, and more and more people are just showing up to the center with more and more need, which it's exciting that we're able to meet those needs often to the best of our ability, and it's tragic the extent of the need that exists in our city. Also, under the umbrella of outreach, of course, is our off-campus organizations that we partner with. We're continuing those partnerships and doing a lot of good work off-campus, both around the city and around the world. Right now, our Outreach Committee is in the process of gathering reports from all of our off-campus and on-campus ministries, actually, to be included in the Charge Conference that'll be coming up in a few months. So we'll have more of a detailed update from all of our various outreach ministries then. We're going to hear more about the financial picture for the COC, like kind of under the umbrella of the church, I think, and the reports that are coming. So I won't get into that too much. I will say that we don't have a total for Dining in for Outreach yet because we just had a bunch of dinners that happened just last night still. So money is still coming in. But we're estimating around $26,000 is our guess, which is the best that we've ever done for Dining in for Outreach. And actually, we budgeted for Dining in for Outreach and the grocery run together. We budgeted $25,000 of income. So we think we're going to beat that with just Dining in for Outreach. And then last year, the grocery run brought in an additional about $4,000. We also have coming up the Holiday Bazaar. The Storehouse Sale is coming up. The Grocery Run is coming up. And in-gathering at Christmas time, we do our big drive, so we're planning for those events. And I just want to tell two... Oh, I want to say one thing about pledging. We heard that we're kind of separating out pledging to a certain extent. Part of that is because we think that there's people who are connected to the COC and have relationships with Asbury primarily through the Outreach Center as opposed to through the congregation. And we also think there's people out in the community who would have a real interest in supporting the COC, perhaps separately from supporting the congregation. So kind of parallel to our in-house congregational pledge drive, we're trying to also get out COC-specific pledge letters and pledge cards to try to expand people who are pledging and supporting our work. I think for us to really live into the potential of what we can do through the COC and to really leverage all of the resources that we've put into that building to make it a reality, I think we recognize that it needs to be owned by our community and it needs to be shared by the community. And so we're trying to bring the community in as supporters in that way. And in that vein, I just want to share two stories quickly. The grocery run, as I said, is coming up the first weekend of November. And it's really easy to give to the Outreach Center through the Grocery Run's online portal. One way is to sign up to run or walk, and your registration fee goes right to us if you sign up as part of our team. But people can also just make donations to the COC with just a few clicks online. So the other day, I sent just like a handful of text messages to some family and friends saying, you know, "I am doing this work with Rochester's poor and homeless. The Community Outreach Center is really important to me. I think we're doing good work, and I'm running this race to try to raise money for it." And within 24 hours, like I literally sent like 20 text messages. It took me like 10 minutes. And within 24 hours, like over $1,000 came in. So like if everybody did that, right? Or if everybody who's running or walking did that, like think about how much more of an impact that fundraiser could make. Similarly, last week, I sent out one of those sort of COC-specific stewardship letters and COC-specific pledge cards. And in my note, I invited folks to try to share those with other people who might be interested in our mission. And one member of our congregation, as I understand it, printed out that letter and walked over to her neighbor and said, "You know, I know that you care about justice work in Rochester. I know that you care about combating poverty in Rochester. And so I'm going to give you this letter, and I wonder if you'd think about supporting this mission. You can just throw it away after I leave if you want to." And my understanding is now that neighbor is going to make a pledge and support. So again, imagine if everybody did that. I think part of growing our understanding of the COC as shared by the community, maybe first we have to recognize that it's shared by us, like our congregation, and this is all of our project and all of our work to do. And there's any number of ways we can support it. So thanks.
Good afternoon. I'm Chuck Hanahan, Chair of the Property Stewardship Committee. And if I could have you turn your attention to the monitors and if I could have our slide. Thank you. Next slide. I always like to start these presentations with a little map of our campus so we're all on the same page. Along the bottom of your screen, out behind us, starting at the far-left side of your screen is our Outreach Center, also known lovingly as 1010, built in 1907 and lovingly restored in 2022. Next building over is the Sanctuary where we sit right now, built in 1953. Next to that is the... Sorry. And Gathering Center, built in 2006. And then our Education Wing, built in 1960. And last but not least, on the far-right of your screen and over there, the stone building known as the Church Office, also as 1010, 1050. You would think I would know these. Built in 1882. That's better. Next slide, please. Our Property Stewardship Committee is a standing committee of the governing board, and our mission is lifelong conservancy, proactively managing and maintaining what our congregation committed to many years ago. We view our buildings as ministry tools. These are the ways that we can do more good. This is the means by which we can worship, the means by which we offer outreach, the means by which we offer community, and everything else that we do. The buildings are simply tools to help us achieve the church's mission. How do we do this? We have a capital improvement plan. We go around and we look at everything in the church campus, and we create a plan. We sort that by urgency, importance, size of the project, and we look out a minimum of 10 years, in some cases, a little bit further. We continually debate these projects, trying to figure out what we need to do with the resources that we have available. We add to this all the time, and in every meeting, we wrestle with what the next priority is. If I could have the next slide. Let's talk a little bit about maintenance. The Golden Gate Bridge was built in 1933, and they started painting it. They're still painting it. Every time they finish, they go across to the first side, and then they go back to the beginning and they start painting again. Maintenance is like that. It's a constant. Now, the Property Stewardship Committee doesn't get involved in the daily maintenance. We have a great crew led by Johnny Cologne, who does that daily maintenance. We look at projects that are outside of the annual operating plan that are too large for the annual operating plan to be able to handle. Can I have the next slide? We also take a look at technology. And as we all know, technology keeps changing and at an ever-faster pace. Now, we don't need to be at the latest technology. We don't need to be the cutting edge. But we do need technology that works and is still supported. And the lifetime of technology keeps getting shorter and shorter and shorter. And you'll see that reflected in some of the things that we have to show you today. So let's take a look at our buildings. Next slide. We'll start with the Community Outreach Center. There's that beautiful building. This was, as you may recall, restored for a long period of time. We worked about a year and a half to bring the Outreach Center together. Next slide. We were not able to achieve everything that we wanted to achieve in that building. Honestly, we had to stop somewhere. So there are some issues that we know about. This is our most advanced building on campus. It's also our most-used building on campus. And with a lot of use comes a lot of maintenance. So keep that in mind, especially as you think about stewardship. The front porch. We have some masonry issues there. We've known about them. As I said, we had to stop somewhere. The front porch is experiencing some extreme cracking, extreme weather-related issues. We have broken stones, broken masonry, bulging walls. It's a large project. It's... Our last estimate was around $60,000. It's one that frankly, we're not going to get to. And you'll understand why that is shortly. These are the kind of things we wrestle with all the time. This is a project that needs to be done, but there are others that are more urgent. You'll see why. Also, the roof. The roof is in great shape right now, but it's a slate roof. It's been on there a long, long time, and we estimate that sometime in the next 10 years, it's going to need some significant work. Next slide, please. Move on to our Sanctuary. So this building, we had a lot of work done. We replaced the front steps in 2018. We did the HVAC, electric and lighting, in 2019 and 2020. And just this past summer, you may have recall seeing a large lift on the campus for quite some time. We did something called the parapets. So what are the parapets? You will probably never see them because they're on the roof. You can see the arrows. Well, maybe you can't see the arrows. They're kind of small. That point to these several locations on the roof. I think there's about 30 of them in total. You can see the picture on the left shows the condition of the masonry on those parapets. And on the right shows the restored parapet. In some cases, we had to replace brick. In all cases, we fixed the flashing, and we fixed the pointing. And now we don't have to worry about those leaking. We really don't like leaks. Upcoming projects. Next slide. We have the Columbarian coming. We are well underway with that. We're finalizing engineering drawings right now. We'll be ordering the longest lead-time items as soon as those drawings are ready. Construction's going to start in the spring or as soon as those long-lead-time items are available with completion in the summer of next year. Next slide, please. Issues on this building. When we replaced the roof in 2005, it's a slate roof with a 100-year life. However, there is a flat area, which you'll see right there, which is an asphalt-rolled roof. That has a 25-year... Sorry, a 20-year warranty, which is up next year. This is a project that is going to need to be done. It's probably not a 2025 project, but it probably is a 2026 project. We also have three smaller roofs over certain entryways, one back there, two on this side. These are older roofs. We kind of forget they exist because we don't see them. And I cannot find anyone who knows anything about when those roofs were replaced. So it must be a long time ago. We've taken a condition report on those roofs, and they will be addressed when we get to the Education Wing. Stay tuned. Next slide. Other issues in this building. The sound system. We've already had a little bit of experience with that today. This was installed 12 years ago. It seems like yesterday, but it was 12 years ago that we turned the system on, and I'm not sure that it's ever been turned off since. And that is the way it's supposed to be used. Components are failing. You may have seen or heard some things go wrong over the past six or eight months. It's past its useful life. Replacement parts are not available, and we're doing a lot of workarounds right now. So this is definitely a project that we're looking at for 2025. And we have a team putting together right now a report, trying to understand how we use the sound system, what all our needs are, and evaluating what options we have. So we'll be back to you with more information about that as it develops. Next slide, please. The Welcome Hall and Gathering Center, we were built 18 years ago. It seems like it was there forever and also like we just did it. This building is... These two areas are in great shape, but we are starting to see increased maintenance in the area of HVAC. Some of you may know we had a heat problem this past week. We had none for a couple of days. That's been resolved, but this is an increasing thing as we start to see things age. Next slide. The Education Wing. Next slide. The roof on this building was installed in 1999. It had a 25-year warranty. And guess what? It's up in May of next year. This is a major project that is going to need to be addressed in 2025. And we have a report being put together right now to advise us on how to do that. We've done a core sample on the roof, and the layers of it are drying out. We have flashing problems. We have opportunities for leaks up there. And this is an urgent issue that we are going to need to address in 2025. Another large project we have in the Education Wing is the windows. Now, some of you may have heard something about the windows. We did extensive study on the windows in there. These are the original 1960 windows, single-pane, steel-frame, horribly inefficient windows. The mechanisms on most of them don't work anymore. You cannot find anyone to work on these products. There is no way to save them. They will need to be replaced. However, this is an enormous project that screams capital program. So more to come on that. Not sure when. I would also just highlight the lack of air conditioning in that building. As time goes on, the summers seem to be hotter and hotter, and the need for air conditioning... For those who've been here in the summer, it's pretty nice in this Sanctuary now that we added that air conditioning. We need to look at that for the Ed Wing at some point. Next slide. 1050, our office. We replaced the boiler there in 2023. That's in great shape. Also, we did some foundation work this past year through a grant that we received from the Rochester Area Community Foundation. We cleaned all of the foundation. Again, this is 1892 stone that we're working on. And catenary construction, our masons, cleaned all the stone, replaced pointing where it needed to be replaced. And we've really solidified that... The foundation of that building. Next slide. So the issues there, I think we all know. So the issues there, I think we all know the number one issue in 1050, it's not accessible. We can't get into the building if you're mobility-challenged. We need an elevator in that building. We thought we were going to get to one as part of the Better Together campaign, but we ran out of money. This is another capital campaign-type program. We'll be talking about that going forward. We just want to highlight that now. I would also add to that for 1050, the lack of air conditioning. This is our church office. Folks work there full-time. We have some portable units that we use. They don't quite keep up. They're better than nothing, but at some point, we probably ought to think about air conditioning for that building. That is my last slide, and I will turn it over to Mark.
I'm so grateful to be able to follow the facilities guy, because I had no idea how I was going to hold the mic and hold my slides. And so, thank you, Chuck. Great presentation, too, by the way. So there were gonna, I thought there might be slides up on the screen, but I understand that they're not. There are three slides. Wow, look at that. As of a half an hour ago, they weren't going to be, and Carl has worked his magic. Thank you, Carl. So the first slide, it's also in your materials. The first slide is an overview look at where we stand through three quarters, actual against budget. So on the left side, we see the budget figures. This is what we expected to do through the end of September. And as you'll see, the revenue is the dark blue, and the expenses are the light blue. We expected at this time of year to be negative, right? Specifically, we expected to be $111,000 negative. And that's just the nature of when revenues come in, in the church. The second quarter and third quarter are slower. First and last are when a lot of the revenue comes in. So we're not surprised to have a negative number. If you look at the actual side of things, you'll see that our negative number is a little bigger than we thought it would be, or hoped it would be. That's more like $150,000 of deficit through three quarters. That means we're about $39,000 behind budget. And we're, the next two slides are going to show us a little bit more of why that is. It's really mostly on the revenue side. And I'll just say, at this point, you might say, well, what's our outlook for the end of the year? Obviously, we expected, because we had a balanced budget. And so our balanced budget will not have a deficit. The question is, are we going to make, are we going to make it to a balanced actual, right? I'll tell you that our best guess right now is that we won't. In fact, the $39,000 deficit is probably going to grow a little bit. The one thing I know about these projections from the few years that I've sat on this committee, both recently and in the past, is that we're almost always wrong. Something changes in the last quarter, and it's often good. So we're praying for good, but our best guess today, for a variety of reasons, is that we will end the year with a deficit. There is a fund balance to cover that, but that fund balance keeps on shrinking. Next slide is already up there. The hook is coming soon, I think. So this is revenue by category. So we're going to look at the revenue, and I told you before that it was mostly, the $39,000 deficit was mostly on the revenue side. So let's look at where that is exactly. If you look, the first two columns on the left, the taller ones are contributions, unrestricted contributions. That's basically pledges and individual giving. You'll see that that's almost right on. You know, we couldn't have predicted much better. Similarly, the other income, which comes from a variety of sources, including outside groups that use the facilities and other sources, that's just about right on as well. Unfortunately, when you look at the donor restricted, you'll see that on the general income side, and this is mostly the COC, the Outreach Center, on the general income side, we just missed our, we just missed our guests. You know, general income means gifts from individuals, gifts from foundations. Based on prior year, we thought we'd have $137,000 by now. We don't have that much. We've got, we've got about $70,000. And so we're still learning, obviously, but that's really where the gap is. The mission-specific giving, including the storehouse and the dining and caring center, those are, well, at least the dining and caring center is ahead of budget. So, you know, good news there, but the general COC giving just didn't come the way we thought it would, based on prior year. So the last slide, to look at expenses. Now, expenses through three quarters are actually less than budget. So we have a positive variance on the expense side, right, John? It's just, that positive variance is more than made up for by the negative on the revenue side that we just talked about. So again, personnel expenses, the light blue line is the actual. It's a little bit, little bit less, quite a little bit less than what was budgeted. Administration is very, very close. On the ministry side, also very, very close. And the property side really is the one exception, you know, in these broad categories. We did spend more on various property and maintenance issues this year than we had hoped and budgeted for. And I would say, you know, further on to Chuck's presentation, which was really more, less about the annual expenses for property, and more about the longer-term issues. But, you know, these are, these are older facilities, and there are times when we just, you know, we haven't been guessing right. And we're still, we're still trying to figure out how it is that RG&E bills us and what that's going to look like. So that's my presentation, and I guess we'll take questions at the end, but.
Thank you, Mark. Good afternoon. My name is Tim Mahan. I'm on the Governing Board and currently serving as treasurer. So I just wanted to talk a little bit about our budgeting process and what to expect for the remainder of the year in terms of key dates and key milestones and where we're at. We're trying to conduct the budgeting process with increased transparency to make sure that everybody is aware of where we're at and has an opportunity to participate and be kept up to date on where things stand. So consecration Sunday is November 3, and that's where we consecrate the pledges that we've received. So this is an encouragement to everybody to not procrastinate and get your pledges in in the month of October. Between the November 3, consecration Sunday, and there will be a Governing Board meeting on November 11, that's where Pastor Michelle, as well as our Administrator Dave, will bring forward recommendations to the Governing Board concerning the budget. We'll have a good idea. We probably won't have received 100% of pledges at that point. Typically, some do straggle in in December as people meet with their financial advisors and have a better understanding of distributions from their retirement counts, et cetera. So we typically don't have the full picture of pledging until into December. However, we'll have a really good idea based on what we've received from pledges so far, so that we can come forward with a proposed budget that the Governing Board can review and we can discuss. The Finance Committee will then review that budget somewhere around November 18. We're not sure yet if we're going to be meeting on Monday or Tuesday, the 18th or 19th. And once the Financial Committee puts their stamp on the budget, saying, yes, we feel good that we can fund this, that will be the proposed budget that's brought before the congregation on December 8 for review and for voting on. So that is our outline of the process. Now, behind the scenes, what's happening now, our pastoral leaders are working with the individual ministry teams and the individual team leadership. There's a really nice summary on the pledge card that you have received in the mail or that's available in the Ritual of Friendship, but the two Q and A questions on the back really do a nice job of summarizing where we're at. Based on current trends, the historic trends we've had for increasing in pledges, the church is very fortunate that we've historically seen nice growth in our pledging base. So thank you very much, and we hope and expect that that will continue. Unfortunately, expenses have been growing faster than our pledge increases over the past few years. So the giving team has a goal to increase both the number of donors. Pat mentioned one of our target audience for potential donors are folks that volunteer at the Community Outreach Center but aren't members of the church. And so there's an example of how we're trying to grow our donor base. And we're also, through the stewardship and giving campaign, reaching out to current folks that pledge. But based on historic trends, there's a gap between where our expenses are today, are projected to be, and what we might, under normal circumstances, expect to raise in pledging for next year. And so the leadership teams and the individual ministries are working on both a fully funded budget, and they're also putting together contingency budgets. So as we can assess where we actually land, then the teams are already engaged in helping us understand where we might be able to work with a little bit less and still accomplish our missions. And so that work is going on right now, and the individual teams are highly engaged in helping us understand where they feel they can make some adjustments to their budget. So I'll stop there.
I'd like to thank everybody for their very comprehensive presentations, and now we're open to questions from anybody. And Paula will take this mic and walk it out to folks who raise their hand for questions. What's the recommended increase for the congregation? Is that on the pledge card?
Well, it was mentioned in our, there's no one recommendation. Again, hoping people give out of a generous spirit and commitment to the church, but there were numbers mentioned in greater than we've asked for in the past. I think in the past, the numbers were somewhat conservative. We were looking for 3% to 5% increases, and we're really hoping for much more this year, 5% to 10% or even more percent. The gap is significant right now, and to really fully fund everything we're trying to do, we need more than we've asked for
Can you tell me where we're at with the grant?
I think you're speaking about the COC. I don't know if there's an update on that. Is there? Okay.
There are two primary grants that are the largest sources of grant revenue for us. One is from Daisy Marquis Jones. That application is still being reviewed with Daisy Marquis Jones, and we don't have a final answer. We're highly hopeful that that one will come through for us. We also get a very generous contribution from Palmer's Fish Market, and that grant typically comes in later in the year, third or fourth week in December. We're also highly optimistic that we'll be able to receive that as well.
Well, since there are no further questions, we're going to conclude with one other thing, and that is to say that if you have things that occur to you later that you want to ask about, you can email any of us, or you can email governance@asberryfirst.org, and we will respond to your emails. One thing just to close with before Pastor Michelle gives us a closing prayer that I'd like to add is that there's a question about, well, should I give, you know, 3%, 5%? What's the goal this year? And the goal this year is to sort of look at it a different way, to look at it instead of, here's a percentage that, you know, we think we ought to increase by. Think about all the ways in which the church has moved you, has caused you to have a richer life, has helped you or people around you, and let the Spirit move you to give more. And what we're hoping is that that will result in an increase that's beyond, you know, whatever percentage we might just say, standing up here. So I'm going to turn it over to Pastor Michelle for a closing
Let me add my thanks to you for spending this time today. Let us pray. Holy and living God, your call rings loud and clear in this place and in our hearts, to be your people of faith restoring the world. We thank you that you call us together to be this community, and we ask that you send us from this place into our world with love, with courage, and with your strength. We ask it in Jesus' name. Amen.